My back has been barking at me. And I've been had a couple of comments on it. So if you see me squirming around up here, I didn't have too much caffeine and I don't have to go to the bathroom. So just that's, that's that. So appreciate your patience with that. Is there anyone here who'd like to give an invocation before we start the formal meeting? Formal agenda, I should say. None heard? Okay, well, give just a few seconds to Bowhead in silence. Okay. City clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Whitteman.
Here.
Alderman Detweiler. Alderman Gettemeyer. Alderman Johnson. Alderman Nay. Alderman Waters. Alderman Wilson.
Present.
Okay. First item up is the consent agenda. Are there any questions related to the consent agenda? Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Alderman Wilson, second by Alderman Gettemeyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Consent agenda is approved. Okay. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak in public comment?
Val DeBruntz.
I still hate public speaking. So I'm going to read it. And I'm going to ask the four people not mentioned in here, but not here, get a copy of this. My name is Val R. DeBruntz and I reside at 2009 St. Madeline Drive in Barrett Haven subdivision of Darden Prairie, Missouri. I want to express my appreciation for the responsiveness of Darden Prairie's mayor, Heath Whitteman, city administrator Kathy Pratt, city clerk and treasurer Kim Clark, city engineer Matthew Davidson, administrative assistant Amy Schnell, building and codes inspector Jeff Amalung, recreation and outreach coordinator Nicole, is it Bouchard?
Correct.
And our newest employee, IT manager Rose Maruska. These dedicated public servants make dealing with the city government joyful. I mean, never heard that word said in this room before.
Too many often somebody comes up and gives a cut.
I appreciate all of you. Seriously. Professionalism with which you execute your respective duties and responsibilities is for me beyond compare. Thank you very much for what you do. I have interacted with all four people, all eight people rather, here and I have never come away unsatisfied, never. I've lived in this community, well, they haven't served as long as I've lived here. But for those of you that have, that know me, and thank you, mayor, for ruining this. Most people, most people who've never met me before, they honestly gonna think that's my hair. So may I submit this for copies for the four people who are not here?
Thank you, thank you, Val DeBruntz. Thank you, Mr. DeBruntz. We appreciate the commentary and sorry for throwing the cat out of the bag.
Arnie Deanoff.
Thank you, members of the board of aldermen. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, county and city public advocate. First of all, I'd like to point out something on your agenda. It's unseen at all the political subdivisions that I attend. But I think the public has a right to comment and publicly testify either oppose or approve or have comments for the consent agenda. That's where a lot of the business happens, where a lot of the hidden secrets kind of are if you are not, if you're asleep at the wheel. And I'd like to see public comments moved above consent agenda to give citizens the opportunity to testify on consent items. A lot of times governments like to hide projects or hide issues or expenditures. And I think the public should have the right to testify on those items before you approve them. Evergreen Solutions, I don't know what they were paid. I forget what their amount was. And I think that's the job of the city administrator. You pay the city administrator well over $100,000 plus benefits plus perks and I believe a contract. And I believe that she can do the task coming from the city of St. Peters. A lot of this information is out there for free and the asking. East West Gateway Coordinating Council, my friend, the executive director Jim Wilder, who I saw at the Missouri Transportation Commission today would be more than happy to provide you salary equations because they compile all that information in data and also reports. The Missouri Municipal League, which you're a member, that's part of your benefits is asked for that information for free. Individual municipalities and political subdivisions would give it to you. And in my opinion, a fifth grader could put this report together. And I don't know exactly what you paid Evergreen, but they made some profit without doing much work. The city stipend, which the mayor talked about, $90 per month plus possibly increasing your salary, increased compensation through ordinance. And of course, the constitution says you can't take a salary increase while in office. I believe the public, if it gets out in the public, they would be really annoyed that you're considering this, increasing the compensation. It's not about money. It's about being a public servant, giving back and making us better and a stronger community. It's about ethics, not like O'Fallon and Nathan Bibb who just had to resign because the FBI and the attorney general and the US Attorney District Office are doing investigations. Serving is giving of yourself, not about what you can get and how you can line your pockets and make your bank account grow. You are similar to the city of Wentzville, population 50,000. And guess what? I believe they get the same exact amount that you do, $375. If you want to have issues like the city of St. Charles, the city of O'Fallon, other cities, Western Groves, population 25, city would do. And city of Frightenac paid their alderman $25 a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deanoff.
That was the last speaker.
Okay, thank you. Okay. It's not gonna be. Next up is new business. First up is bill 2546. May I have a motion to read bill 2546 for the first time? Moved by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor? Any opposed? City attorney, please read bill 2546 by title only for the first time.
Bill number 25-46, an ordinance of the city of Darden Prairie, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute an omnibus first amendment to leases between the city of Darden Prairie and the Metropolitan Park and Recreation District, doing business as Great Rivers Greenway and providing for related matters.
Okay. I know we brought this to bear in the work session. We had some discussion around it. Does the board have any further comment related to bill 2546?
I wanted to confirm, re-read it once or twice, just to confirm. I'm sorry.
City attorney, are the city administrator confirmed this is not a legislative, therefore administrative? So we will move forward twice if the board likes, would like to proceed with that?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Johnson to read by second, second time by title only, seconded by Alderman Wilson, all in favor? Any opposed? None heard, city attorney.
Bill number 25-46, an ordinance of the city of Darden Prairie, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute an omnibus first amendment to leases by and between the city of Darden Prairie, Missouri and the Metropolitan Parks and Recreation District, doing business as Great Rivers Greenway.
Any further discussion? If not.
Move for a roll call vote.
Motion for a roll call vote by Alderman Johnson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderman Waters.
Aye.
Alderman Gettemeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Nay.
Aye.
Alderman Detweiler. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Ordinance 2380.
And now declare bill 2548, ordinance 2360.
2380.
2380. My hearing must be dyslexic tonight. Okay, thank you. Next up on new business is bill 2547. Can I have a motion to read bill 2547 by title only for the first time?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. City attorney, please read bill 2547.
Bill 25-47, an ordinance of the city of Darden Prairie, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to negotiate and execute a deposit agreement guaranteeing land disturbance improvements with cash by and between the city and St. Charles Community College, guaranteeing the construction, installation and completion of certain improvements within the St. Charles Community College field to table institute development.
And.
This is just administration because it's just securing the deposit, everything else been.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is already voted on and the final, the plan was approved. So this is administrative. So that being said, is any, any other discussion around this? None heard. Motion to read bill 25.
Yeah, vote on it first.
Oh, okay. Where were we at here? Got a motion to second reading, I thought I was gonna say. That's what I was in the list, okay. Yeah, I have a motion to read bill 2547 for the second time.
So move.
Second.
Motion or move by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Gettemeyer, all in favor?
Aye.
City attorney, you please read bill 2547 by title only for the second time.
Bill number 25-47, an ordinance of the city of Darden Prairie, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to negotiate and execute a deposit agreement guaranteeing land disturbance improvements with cash by and between the city and St. Charles Community College, guaranteeing the construction, installation and completion of certain improvements within the St. Charles Community College field to table institute development.
Any further discussion on bill 2547?
Move for a roll call vote.
Motion for a roll call vote by Alderman Johnson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gettemeyer, all in favor?
Aye.
City clerks, please call the roll.
Alderman Gettemeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Nay. Alderman Detweiler. Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Waters.
Aye.
Ordinance 2381.
And now declare bill 2547, ordinance 2381. Okay, moving on to old business. We've got a couple of items on here for old business, three actually. First one is bill 2542. We read it one time on September 17th, 20, this past year here. It is, can I have a motion to read bill 2542 for, by title only for the second time?
So move.
Moved by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, city attorney.
Bill 25-42, an ordinance of the city of Darden Prairie, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to execute a surface transportation block grant, parenz STBG, closed parenz, program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Bates Road Phase One Project STBG-5407, parenz 622, closed parenz.
Any further discussion on bill 2542?
Yes, I got a question for the city engineer. This would not eliminate turn lane in each end, would it?
Yeah, yes, it would.
It would eliminate a turn lane in each end.
Yeah, it would, it would eliminate the entire center turn lane from pretty much the intersection at Red Hawk Parkway and the South Outer 364.
Hey, that, that's a, I was mistaken on that. I mean, I think we definitely need to amend it for the turn lane. It was my understanding that was gonna be there, especially into outer road. Those cars line up. I mean, they would, they would definitely. And then when going on to Bates Road, when it makes a turn there, when my church lets out on Sundays, you need another, you need a turn lane there on the other end because it lines up. And that, that would be a big issue in bottleneck on that road, in my opinion, on that.
Before the meeting started, I passed out to each of the aldermen and people up here behind the dais, some letters or emails that I received from Ward Two residents. So I hope that each of you have read those and understand that the citizens on that side of Ward Two have taken a lot of time to let this board know that they are not in favor of this. And, you know, they feel like those turn lanes are necessary. And they, even though they know that the road may need to have some maintenance done to it, they do not want to eliminate the turn lanes for people to ride bicycles on that road. So I hope each of you have taken the time to read this and understand it and know that that's what the citizens who are live along that road, how they feel, and that you take that into consideration when you make your vote.
Um, I, and both ends, there is land that could be acquired to widen that if need be. And both locations to definitely keep that turn lane in. What, what would we need to do to amend this thing to add those left turn lanes in each end?
That would be a project scope change. So that would have to go back to the county road board and the East West Gateway Council for approval because right of way acquisition was not part of this project.
I, I'm just really concerned. Actually, I come that way to the meeting tonight and I was the sixth car in line to make a left onto the outer road. I, I would really, this board considered sending it back to look at this. I mean, and, and don't get me wrong. I'm all in favor of getting $1.2 million from the state to redo this whole road. But, but we do have to take traffic into consideration on this thing.
So if we send it back to the engineer, we have to be clear of what we're looking for. Is that correct, everyone? Right? So do we need to table this and then give the city engineer proper direction? What do we do? Can I ask that question? Or we have to just knock it out?
Require full scope change. So I would, as far as the process goes, I would ask city administrator or city engineer to discuss the process to do a scope change. I'm not sure if, then we might have to vote through it at this point, but.
I agree. I believe that the, that the correct action would be to deny this ordinance, not approve this ordinance. Direct the city engineer on scope changes you want to see. And then we would have to go back through the process. And Matt, I don't know, is this, is a scope change request something that happens off schedule with the regular grant schedule?
Usually a scope change happens during the project. So it'd be after we have the agreement in place and have like a, the process in place and moving along. And then we would present that to the county road board and Missouri Highways Commission, the scope change for their approval.
What if they did not approve it?
As in us or them? Or, oh, like if they don't approve the scope change?
Twice for scope.
Then I believe we would be liable for the cost. They just wouldn't contribute to that portion.
So the last board, I mean, last road project we had was the infamous Stump Road project where citizens didn't want a center turn lane. We got it. We don't have bike lanes, but they've just painted on the two lanes bikes. So you can tell that it's doing that. I don't understand why Bates Road would be any different in that we would need the turn lane. And why can we just not have the bikes like it's done in Stump Road, you know, only a few months ago?
And Town Square.
And Town Square.
Yes, yeah. That, I have talked to the county road board since then and they said that is not an eligible improvement, a bike lane improvement. And so going forward, just painting those on will not be eligible for funding from the county road board.
And maybe, is it because it was the type of grant that was put in for? Is that correct? That's why those bike lanes are required for this grant money?
Not exactly. For, for receiving county road board, it has to be pedestrian or bike facility improvements. As for the East West Gateway Grant, it, it's fine as is, yes. It scored us more points on the East West Gateway Grant stating we were having separated bike lanes. So removing those within alter our score, which could have made us ineligible for funding.
And the decision is already out, so.
Correct. The decision is out.
I don't think it's worth taking a risk of them allowing us to make the change because if they don't, then we have residents that are stuck with a road that doesn't benefit them. And I would rather see the road benefit the residents with cars than a road with a bike. So people have to get to work. They have to get kids to school. They have to do more important things with a car than they do on a road with a bike. And I just think that it's, it's disgraceful for the county road board to make these rules and regulations that affect people's lives when, you know, they don't, they don't listen to what the, the needs are of the residents in the county. So I, I think we need to just not accept this grant and move on and try to find another grant that we can use to repave this road.
Okay. Any further discussion by the board on this?
I, oh. I guess my, my big concern is, is if we do approve this, then we would go in for changes into it. And then, um, they, they would, if we, if we ask for the widening of each end return lanes, would that deny us the grant then down the line or?
I don't think it would deny us. I, I think the only way that we would possibly lose funding through a scope change is by removing the bike lanes completely. I think, you know, widening the roadway as you, you're stating and keeping the separated bike lanes by adding, keeping that center turn lane as well. I think, I don't think we would lose funding that way because we are keeping, we are keeping in place what we stated we wanted and what they, they wanted.
We're also beholden to them to approve our scope change.
Correct.
And if they don't, we're on the hook for the entire amount.
But then we can deny it after that also. If we're, if we're on the hook for the entire amount, then that would have to come back to us to approve that additional money. And then we can turn it down. Correct? Is that right, John? We would have to approve additional money if we're on the hook part?
You would have to prove additional monies, but you would be contractually obligated to spend those monies if you were taking the state and federal money. Otherwise, you may have to pay that money back.
That's right. I mean, yeah, we'd have to give the money back if we didn't approve the additional money. If they didn't approve, you know what I'm saying?
Right. And I'm not sure what phase. I would assume, and Matt, this is a question for you, that would be in the design phase?
Yeah, it'd be in the design phase.
We have to make a decision tonight.
Can we postpone this and then you submit the design change? Before we approve it?
Well, Kurt, we don't have a designer on contract right now with us. So, but I could request, I could reach out to both councils and, and see, see the process moving forward on what we could do.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to the next meeting.
Second.
To get clarification on where we can go and what we can do with this before we vote it down. So I made a motion to postpone this to the next meeting.
I seconded it.
Motion by Alderman Johnson to postpone the vote of bill 2542, the second meeting. Seconded by Alderman Gettemeyer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard?
And the motion was to postpone to the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was in there.
Okay, thank you.
Just one last comment. When we were dealing with Stump Road, residents were told that we could make changes once it was, the ball was rolling and everything. And that never came to fruition. Some of it, a little bit leery about trying to prove something and then make changes that seem like they're common sense changes just because that, and that project was, didn't happen that long ago. I know I keep harping on Stump Road, but I just wanted to say the similarity between this and Bates Road is pretty apparent.
Okay. Okay. For the final, let's see. Okay, so we're on the second one now. And old business is gonna be bill 2544. This was read one time on 9/17 as well. Can I have a motion to read bill 2544 for the second time by title only? All in favor? Any opposed? None heard? City attorney.
Bill number 25-44, an ordinance of the city of Darden Prairie, Missouri, amending section 115.020 and Article 3 of Chapter 115 of the municipal code of the city of Darden Prairie, Missouri, by leaving them in their entirety and acting in lieu thereof a new section 115020 and Article 3 of Chapter 115 and providing for the designation of the city treasurer.
Any further discussion on bill 2544? None heard? Can I entertain a motion to, uh, put bill 2544 to a final vote? Moved by Alderman Gettemeyer, second by Alderman, Alderman Detweiler, second by Alderman Gettemeyer, all in favor? Any opposed? None heard? City clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderman Detweiler. Alderman Nay. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Waters. Alderman Gettemeyer. Alderman Johnson. Ordinance 2382.
And now declare bill 2544, ordinance 2382. Okay. Now we're on to our final one. The bill 2545 was read by, read one time on September 17th. Can I entertain a motion to have bill 2545 read for a second time by title only? Moved by Alderman Detweiler, second by Alderman Gettemeyer, all in favor? Any opposed? None heard? City attorney.
Bill number 25-45, an ordinance of the city of Darden Prairie, Missouri, amending various provisions in Title III, parenz Traffic Code, closed parenz, of the municipal code relating to enforcement of certain devices or vehicles.
Any further discussion related to bill 2545? Motion for a roll call vote by Alderman Johnson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor? Any opposed? None heard? City attorney, please read bill 2545 for a second time by title only. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion for a roll call vote, sorry.
Alderman Wilson. Alderman Detweiler. Alderman Waters. Alderman Gettemeyer. Alderman Johnson. Alderman Nay. Ordinance 2383.
And now declare bill 2545, ordinance 2383. All right. Okay, that concludes old business. So we'll roll into staff communications at this point. Sorry, the city attorney.
I have nothing, mayor.
City engineer, anything further?
I have nothing there.
City administrator.
Thank you. To follow up on comment during public comment, I will share. Thank you. Uh, to follow up on comment during public comment, I will share that the Evergreen Solutions study, um, cost the city seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, while I appreciate the compliments, um, from Mr. Dean Hoff related to my ability to do the compensation study, that is, that is, uh, mostly true. Um, I have experience with, um, a different sort of compensation plan, um, a lot of experience, however, not with a banded plan like this. And I just wanted to point out that this did come up for discussion during the work session presentation, where I was asked if I could, um, complete the compensation study. And part of my comment and concern with that is that there's a certain amount of personal bias that would be very hard to avoid in me establishing the classifications for each position. Now that the plan has been developed, I certainly could be involved and possibly do the work to update the plan, um, but I think classifications of positions should always be a third-party consultant.
Okay, thank you. Um, next up is the alderman.
Yes. One of the big questions I got during Darting Prairie Days, and I'd like to find out the status of where we are with our display sign out front.
The IT manager is working on, um, putting together specifications for that sign so that she can solicit for bids.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other aldermen have any additional comments?
Yes, I would just like to say that, um, I thought the city staff did a great job with, um, Prairie Days. The weather was wonderful and, and it, there were a lot of residents that came out and enjoyed the day. Um, I do think that it's great that the city does things like this. I hope that maybe we can find another one to do in some sort of the springtime, um, for, I know we have our Easter egg hunt, but, um, I think it's always great to interact with the residents of the city in this type of a fashion, and I think Darting Prairie is, uh, a great city, and the citizens like to take part in that. The other thing that I would like to say is I think that the city, when we go out for grants, um, from now on, I think we've learned a couple things, and from the last several roar, board, um, things that have been done, that we need to really stop and think about what we're applying for, what their ramifications are, and that, um, what we're gonna have to do would be the right thing for the citizens. Um, I think there's plenty of room on Bates Road for people if they wanna ride their bikes, but there are at times of the day that there is not plenty of room on Bates Road for all the cars. So, um, cars have to come first in this city. It's the way we get around. Um, so that, just in comment, just, I think we need to research the grants, um, and make sure that we're, we're going out for the right ones. Thank you.
Any other aldermen have, uh, additional comments? None heard. Okay, so that comes to me. Um, it's been said by a few of the folks here, but I'm gonna go ahead and continue to pile on. Prairie Day, I, I feel was just, uh, a big success this year. I hope, uh, everybody out there listening has had a chance to attend and join. Uh, I, you know, I've, I've been to, this is three, four, I'm not sure how many at this point, but my gosh, each time I feel like it gets a little bit better each, each year, and, and this year, uh, it's a true, true testament to our staff that put a lot of work into it. Um, some of the staff and, uh, they showed up and, and volunteers showed up at seven AM, and some of the staff, the staff's family came out too. Um, and so it wasn't just the staff, it was a family affair within the city staff and, and just other folks that are coming in and helping out. Uh, and that went all the way until I think that, uh, I left, and it was the last of us left, Jeff and I left with probably eleven o'clock at night, so something like that. Uh, Kathy was there too, so, uh, it, it, you know, it was a, it was a long day, it was a lot of work by the city staff, but I felt, I saw a lot of smiling faces, I saw a lot of happy people, and we really, uh, did, did a great job of bringing our community together, and that's what it's all about. And, uh, you know, it was, it was nice to see that there were, there, you know, I actually got emails and notes complimenting and fireworks, so, you know, when you're up the, behind the dais like this, everybody probably understands it's nice to, to get that instead of, you know, the other, the other side of it. Um, so, you know, next year, you know, we'll continue to, to make it bigger and better and, and do everything we can to improve it. Um, but, you know, I think that this year was, was very special, as, as Kathy and some of the aldermen pointed out. Um, so I think, and, and specifically too, I wanna thank the alderman for, they, you know, the alderman every year come out and staff the tent and help out, and the alderman did that this year. It was, uh, it was pretty warm out there, uh, but everybody was, uh, you know, very, they filled time slots all the way from the beginning to the end, uh, and, and were helping throughout as well, even afterwards, uh, in a couple cases, after the tent was pulled down, there were aldermen out kinda chipping in and helping out, so, uh, kind of an exciting thing as well. We started a new tradition this year where, uh, the mayor cooks barbecue for the staff, so, I'm a big barbecue guy, so we had a great time. Um, so it was, uh, it was a lot of fun had by everybody, including the staff who worked hard, so enough about that. So, kinda going back to what Kathy said with the, the Evergreen, uh, solution and staffing, I think that, uh, I just wanna drop anchor on one of the comments that was made during public comment. Uh, ensuring that the staff is paid equitably is really important to ensuring that we have, we retain and attract talented folks, and I, and I mentioned this early on in the work session, and I'm not sure if everybody, uh, the commenter was, was here for that, but there's a big part of it is, uh, you know, you look around in other cities, and I think the, probably the closest one approximation size is nineteen thousand. I think that's a night, just a shade over nineteen is Lake St. Louis, that's our neighbor over there. They've got about ninety people on staff, uh, but, you know, in total of their whole city. Um, we're fourteen and a half thousand, we've got about, we've got about, we've got, I think we're about fourteen right now. So ensuring that they are well compensated, because they're oftentimes double and triple-hatted in what they do, uh, that's extremely important, and we wanna make, and we wanted to make sure we did it the right way, and the board approved the Evergreen study, uh, and, and appreciation of how important it is to make sure we do it right, and also to make sure that Kathy's not put into a, a difficult position by having to, uh, seeming to be, uh, biased in some capacity. So that, that, and, and it's been since twenty thirteen, I believe, if I remember correctly, since the last time any kind of salary study was done by any outside organization on our staff and our, and in the board, so I think it was far overdue for, for seventy-five hundred dollars every thirteen years, I think it made sense. Um, and, and I think that the board felt that as well, that's why they voted on it and approved it. Um, but I do appreciate the comments, and just wanted to take an opportunity to sort of, uh, reflect on that and, and kinda share the, you know, some of the decision-making that went into it, uh, and happy to have any further discussions after the meeting on that if needed. Um, you know, it's been a pretty busy meeting tonight, but we, we got a lot done, uh, but I thank the board for, you know, all the good commentary tonight, and the city staff will, will take action on the things that we discussed, and, uh, separately, I wanna thank everybody for coming out, participating in your local government, and, uh, whether you spoke or you just listened, uh, and I, you know, thank you for coming out, and for those taking notes for the paper, thanks. Uh, and then thanks to the St. Charles County Police, uh, our, our police officer, Tom, back there for keeping us safe, and, uh, we appreciate it. That being said, uh, motion to adjourn? Motion, motion by Alderman Detweiler, second by Alderman Johnson, all in favor? I adjourn the October first work session, or the regular meeting.